Good evening, councilors. I now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, October the 18th, 2021, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Jared Evans.
Good evening, colleagues. Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the passing of former Secretary of State Colin Powell.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If everyone please bow their heads for a moment. Thank you, everybody. Right now, I'd like to introduce to you the pastor from the west side of Indianapolis in one of the oldest churches in Wayne Township, Pastor Mandy.
Good evening and greetings from Mount Olive Ministries, a church in Wayne Township since for 151 years. In fact, we celebrate 152 next spring, April 24th, as a United Methodist congregation. Wise and loving one, bless our beloved and beautiful city and all her people. Those whose labor is completed today and those who find themselves working the night shift, may peace and comfort be in their hearts and in their lives wherever their heads find space to rest or their bodies work. Grant that our City-County Council, the mayor, and all who serve this city have ears to hear the voices of the people, all the people in our community. Bless the agenda tonight that it may be fruitful and connected to the common good, with concern for the dignity and humanity of all, especially the least of these. May we remember too, that just as our vote is sacred, so is our commitment to serve one another. Lead us to righteousness and justice for the good people of this great city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Ray has asked to be excused this evening, so there are 24 councilors present. We have no guests this evening, so the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Special ordinance numbers 12 through 16. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for September the 27th, 2021. Do I have consent? We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and this first item on our agenda is proposal number 296, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 296 reappoints Anthony Bridgman to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 298, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 298 reappoints Stacy Earl to the Animal Service Advisory Board. The proposal's passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 330, introduced by Counselor Mascary, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee. The Marion County Information Services Agency requests an additional appropriation of $750,000 and a transfer of appropriations totaling $620,000, yes, I'm sorry, $620,000 in characters 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Information Services Fund to address unforeseen cost increases in technology prices and increased technology adoption caused by the pandemic. Proposal number 331, introduced by Counselor Graves, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, authorizes the issuance of one or more series of its City of Indianapolis, Indiana multi-family housing revenue bonds, Pepper Mills Farms Apartments. With such further or different series designation as may be necessary, desirable or appropriate, including such series designation to indicate the year in which the bonds are issued and the maximal aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million in approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Proposal number 332, introduced by Counselor Gray, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, approves the issuance of local tax, local income tax revenue bonds of the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of certain public transportation projects within the city and the county, pledging local income tax revenues for public transportation projects in the county public transportation fund to the payment of such bonds and other related matters, excuse me. Proposal numbers 333 through 337, refer to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Proposal number 333, introduced by Counselor Oliver. The Department of Parks and Recreation requests an additional appropriation of $2,141,900 and a transfer of appropriations totaling $700,000 in characters 3, 1, 3, and 4 and of the Parks General Fund to finance land acquisition costs, the purchase of capital equipment, and for the design, construction, and inspection of capital infrastructure project. Proposal number 334, introduced by Councilors Oliver and Jackson, establishes interest in the purchase of real estate at 2800 North German Church Road, Indianapolis, Indiana, by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposal number 335, introduced by Councilors Oliver and Jackson, establishes interest in the purchase of real estate at 2900 North German Church Road, Indianapolis, Indiana, by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposal number 336, introduced by Councilors Oliver and Carlino, establishes interest in the purchase of real estate at 8851 West 42nd Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposal number 337, introduced by Councilors Oliver and McCormick, establishes interest in the purchase of real estate at 1501 North High School Road, Indianapolis, Indiana, by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposal number 338, introduced by Counselor Robinson, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, approves certain public, I'm sorry, approves certain public purpose grants totaling $1,066,285 from the Department of Justice Fiscal Year 2021 Justice Assistant Grant, JAG Local Board, excuse me. Proposal number 339 and 340, refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 339, introduced by Counselor Osley, authorizes bus in turn lanes and amends the code to make various changes to chapters 441 and 621 regarding traffic as part of the Indigo Superstops, a component of the Marion County Transit Plan. Proposal number 340, introduced by Counselor Mascary, approves and interlocal cooperation agreement between the Consolidated City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Indianapolis, and the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, Beech Grove, to grant Beech Grove a license to use and occupy a portion of the public right-of-way of Thompson Road for the construction, operation, continuation, and maintenance of a multi-use path. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal numbers 341 through 345, 2021, are all rezonings that were certified to the council for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no one wishes to call any of these proposals down for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Is there anyone who wishes to call down any of the proposal numbers 341 through 345, 2021? All right, seeing no one, proposal numbers 341 through 345, 2021, will now pass into law. There is no business under special orders public hearing, and there is no business under special orders unfinished business. So we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And this first item on our agenda is proposal number 254, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 254 approves a resolution for SCP Meadow LLC and Indiana Limited Liability Company for the issuance of City of Indianapolis Development Revenue Bonds in amount not to exceed $22,500 to provide a portion of the cost of construction, development, and equipment, a proposed apartment complex known as West Village at Avondale Meadows, which would consist of 216 affordable rent restricted, 216 affordable rent restricted units located at 3250 East 38th Street. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Hart.
Yeah, just a quick question for anybody who has the answer. Who's responsible for paying back the bonds on this?
Is anyone here in the audience who can answer Counselor Hart's question?
Good evening. Scarlett Martin from the Department of Metropolitan Development. Can you repeat your question, please?
Who's responsible for paying back the bonds on this project?
So this is a low-income housing tax credit project, so the state issues 4% tax credits, and then they are syndicated, and then that is part of the financing. Essentially, they factor into how you pay off the bonds.
So is any of this backed by taxpayer dollars?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there additional questions on proposal 254? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal 267. Proposal number 267, 2021, adopts the annual budget for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2022, and was heard by several different committees. We'll begin our committee reports with Chairman Oliver of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, proposal number 267 adopted annual budget of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County. Counselor McCormick moves, seconded by Counselor Larison, to send proposal 267. It passed out of committee by a unanimous vote of 6 to 0, which the chairman, I so move.
We will now hear from Chairwoman Lewis regarding the recommendation of the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 267 adopts the annual budget of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, the Metropolitan and Economic Development portion only. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll now hear from Chair Mascary of the Administration and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 267 adopts the annual budget of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2022 administration finance portion only. Passed, due pass, 11-0. I so move.
We'll now hear from Chair Robinson of the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 267, 2021, adopts the annual budget of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County for 2022, the public safety and criminal justice portion only. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counselor Maury, to send proposal 267 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 10 to 1, with Counselor Ethan Evans casting the negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
And finally, Chair Chairman Adamson with a report from the Public Works Committee and a further motion on the proposal. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 267 adopts the annual budget for the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, 2022 public works portion only, which represents the largest investment in city infrastructure in over two decades without raising taxes or selling off assets. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counselor McCormick, to send proposal number 267 to the full council with due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, in order to permit some councilors with possible conflicts of interest regarding portions of proposal number 267 to abstain on those portions, I move to divide the question on the adoption of that proposal as follows. Question number one, the appropriations for community development grants set forth in section 4.01B of proposal number 267. Question two, the appropriations for public purpose grants set forth in section 4.01C of proposal number 267. Question number three, the appropriations of crime prevention grants set forth in section 4.01D of proposal 267. Question number four, the appropriations for the Office of Marion County Public Defender set forth in section 1.06B of proposal 267. Question number five, the appropriations for the Information Services Agency set forth in section 1.05E of proposal 267. And question six, the balance of proposal 267, and I so move.
All right, then we will now vote on the motion to divide the question as presented. You should each have a copy of the motion at the end of your agenda packets. I will ask for the board on the division of the question. All those in favor, please, you'll press your green button. All right, that motion passes 24 to 0. Is there any further discussion on proposal 267 before we proceed with voting on the divided questions? Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's permission to abstain. I serve as a CEO of a local nonprofit.
Very good, thank you. So we'll now proceed to voting on proposal number 267, 2021. Chairwoman Jackson.
Mr. President, I ask to sustain. I serve as executive director of a grassroots nonprofit.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to abstain, as I work in a nonprofit in housing, and it might be a conflict of interest.
Very good, thank you. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too work for a nonprofit and would like to abstain as well.
Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding question one, I'd like to abstain there because I serve on the board of a nonprofit.
Mr. President, I would move question one, the adoption of question one. Is there a second?
Is there a second? All right, very good. We will now then proceed to vote on proposal number 267, 2021. Question one. Chairwoman Robinson, are you abstaining? Okay, very good. All right, very good then. So question one passes, motion carries, a vote of 20 ayes and four abstentions. A motion for... Yes, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move question two, the appropriations for public purpose grants set forth in section 4.01C of proposal 267. I would move its adoption.
All right, improperly moved and seconded. We will vote. All right, Chairwoman Lewis.
Mr. President, so permission to abstain from question two, and maybe, if I can get the numbers right, maybe three, so I don't want to continue to interrupt you, but I do run a nonprofit, and I just want to make sure I'm not voting on anything that may create any type of conflict.
Very good, thank you. Chairwoman Jackson.
I'm asking to do the same, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Brown.
I too need to abstain on question number two.
Very good. Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also am CEO of a nonprofit organization and would like to abstain for this particular one.
Very good. Yes. Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for clarification, when this went through committee, were these councilors abstaining as well in committee, and if so, does that affect how the committee came out?
I'll have to ask for our attorney and the chairpeople.
Mr. President, it's not necessary to abstain during committee, only on the final vote.
Thank you for clarification.
All right, thank you very much. So we are on question two, I believe. All those in favor, please press your green button. All right, that motion carries 19 ayes and four abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move question three, the appropriations for crime prevention grants set forth in section 4.01D of proposal 267. I would move for its adoption.
All right, this is improperly moved and seconded. I think our council people have indicated what they'll have to abstain from, is that correct? Ah, Counselor Carlino.
Mr. President, I request abstain from this, just in case the school district I work for gets any dollars from the crime prevention grants, please.
Very good, thank you, Counselor Carlino. Any other councilors? All right, very good. We'll proceed then to the vote on question three. Very good. Motion carries 20 ayes and four abstentions. Do I have a motion to vote on question four?
Yes, Mr. President. Question number four is the appropriations for the Office of the Marion County Public Defender's Office set forth in section 1.06B of proposal number 267. I would move for its adoption.
All right, improperly moved and seconded. They will now go to the board for a vote on question four. Chairwoman Jackson. It's appropriation for the Office of the Marion County Public Defender. Very good. And the motion carries with a vote of 23 ayes and one abstention.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would read question five, the appropriations for the Information Services Agency set forth in section 105E of proposal number 267. I would move for its adoption.
Second. All right, I will be abstaining from voting on question five of this proposal to avoid any possible appearance of a conflict. So we'll now go to the board for a vote.
Mr. President.
Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I work for a global technology company that could potentially sell services to the city, and I'll go ahead and abstain from this one as well.
Very good. Any other councilors? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board for our vote. All right, the motion carries 22 ayes and two abstentions. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question six is the balance of proposal number 267. I would move for its passage.
Comments from councilors? Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of brief remarks on the remainder of the budget, and I think we've all heard them before, so I'm going to be brief, and that is the glaring infrastructure crisis that our city faces. You know, I don't think there's any way to vote against this budget. We have to get these public safety funds and resources to those on the front line, but there's no long-term plan in this budget to address the infrastructure crisis. You know, the MPO said last week, we need to be spending roughly $300 million a year just to maintain current road funding. And this budget puts $90 million towards that, and over the next three years, that decreases to almost $40 million. So we're even trending in the wrong direction. So I hope by this time next year to work with my colleagues across the aisle and the city to hopefully find some kind of long-term solution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be curious to know if Counselor Bane has any suggestions on how to do that, and if that would include also talking to our good friends across Market Street, which really control the purse strings for our infrastructure dollars.
Yes, Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would love to be a part of those negotiations. I've mentioned that to both people from the State House and the city. However, I don't view that as a possible solution, just given the dynamics, because of the 150 legislators over there, 130 of them don't live in Marion County, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they probably already think we get too much. So I think that the solution is for us to find, and that's where leadership comes in, and that's why I think the onus is on us to find a solution to this. It's not the mayor's administration's fault we're in this problem. It goes back decades. However, it is our fault for not having a solution, and that's where I think we need leadership right now.
Very good. Additional comments? Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to highlight a couple of points that I think are important for everyone to keep in mind and urge people to appreciate and pass this budget. This is the fifth consecutive year of a balanced budget in our county. It's resulted in multiple credit rating increases. It's a comprehensive fiscal package of over... It's a comprehensive fiscal package of over one point three six billion dollars. It's got federal money and the ART Plan coming in of over four hundred million dollars. It's got emergency rental assistance, one of the leading municipal programs in the country of over ninety million dollars. We have emphasized public safety. We have added new officers. We have added new technology. We have added grassroots programming to address the societal causes of a lot of our crime issues. We're dealing with re-entry. We're dealing with food hunger. We're dealing with job training, new pay structures for a woefully underpaid city-county employee-staff, which I think is very important, twenty-five million dollars in parkways and greenways. Personally, I was very impressed and very appreciative of how this budget process took place and urge everybody here voting tonight and in the public to really be appreciative of what is happening here and the step forward that this budget is making, and I urge everybody to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Chairwoman Jackson?
Thank you, President Osley. I echo my counselor sentiments, Counselor Boots. I also want to say, as the mayor Hossid started, when he started, and the counselors started equity when budgeting, I want to say, for the first time in this budget, I really can see the equity and inclusion down to the grassroots level, especially for District fourteen. I can speak for my district, where we're seeing some of the projects in this budget that are allocated for twenty twenty-two in the parks, in infrastructure, in some economic development that Oak Tree Apartments is included or that site has been budgeted for. So when we talk about equity, a lot of times, we say it, but you don't see it. And for twenty twenty-two, I can say for District fourteen, we are going to see, we got a ways to go, but we have started the process, and I want to give kudos to Mayor Hossid and his administration, leadership and their staff for that, because there is some equity and inclusion from all the way down from mental health, like he said, all the way to what we're seeing to the rent. The majority of the rental assistance went to African-Americans, and they needed it and we needed it. So, and then that's kudos, and then the help that we're going to get out of the ARPA funds, I'm excited to see where that goes, and we'll continue to work with the mayor's administration and make sure that filters down to the grassroots communities as well, that equity gets involved and is included in that process as well. And the mayor's administration has promised us that that will happen as well. So there's equity in this process, and then addressing the crime is not going to, it took us years, fifty-plus years to get to the status, and it's not going to turn around overnight, but there has been millions of dollars, over forty-five million dollars allocated over the next three years to help address the crime in our crime-ridden areas and us working together. So again, this balanced budget is not just balanced, there is some equity there, there are some things that are in this budget that is going to come down to the neighborhoods that have been underserved for years and that this mayor and not that other mayor's handled, but for the first time, we can see it with this administration in this budget. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Counselor Barth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments to add on to what Counselor Boots and Counselor Jackson said. At the risk of combining our previous vote on ARP funds into these comments, I think when it comes to investing in violence reduction and looking at those two things in their totality, it's really important. This more operational budget combined with a hundred and fifty million dollars that we're investing in violence reduction is pretty, hopefully, pretty transformational. In particular, I want to call out the thirty million dollars that's going to go into mental health. That's a pretty dramatic and significant investment by the city, and I think it's one that's going to pay dividends. I'd like to thank the administration for really thinking that through carefully and being really thoughtful in how those dollars are really spent. I also want to thank a lot of the counselors who spend a lot of time on this, in particular, Counselor Boots has sent on several calls with me and the community mental health centers really thinking these issues through, so I appreciate all those hours spent and that time invested, and I think this will be well worth it. The other thing I want to add is several of us during the process expressed some concerns around making sure that the Office of Minority and Women Business had enough FTEs to do the job that they're really being asked to do. At this time, I think it's especially important that the city is really grabbing entrepreneurs by the hand and walking side by side with them and making sure that those entrepreneurs have the opportunity to understand how the process works and to make sure that they can tap into opportunities to contract with the city. And in working with the administration, they really stepped up, and I appreciate their partnership. They have significantly addressed one of the concerns I had, and that was that we didn't have enough DBEs, small businesses certified with the city run by people with disabilities. They've committed to really focus on that, and in addition, they've committed to add two FTEs in a twenty-three budget to really continue that work of advancing, supporting our entrepreneurs who work with that office to make sure they have opportunities to contract with the city. So thanks to the administration and other counselors and all that stuff.
Very good. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Jared Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a couple of comments. When we took office and when we took control of council in two thousand and sixteen, that first year's budget was fifty million dollars for infrastructure, and it's just a comment to my friend and colleague, Counselor Bain, ever since that period of time, we have increased the infrastructure budget. We've used bond issuance, we've used fund balance, and so when we're having that conversation, I think it's very difficult for our citizens and our taxpayers, because the city of Indianapolis generates more than enough revenue to take care of what we need. But as I'm sure you're aware, Counselor, through the state system, they take our funds and they give them to other communities around the state of Indiana, so that's going to be a big part of that, and I appreciate your comments. It's absolutely important, and it's something we have to address, but I just want to make sure we understand that under Mayor Hossid's administration and this city council, we have been investing records amounts of dollars in infrastructure. It's just not enough, and we're aware of that. However, we have to be fiscally responsible for our own citizens and not taxing them as well. And just to kind of add on to that with regards to the spending, we're spending unprecedented amounts of dollars on the nonprofits trying to address root causes in this budget, and I'm very proud of that. We're adding a hundred officers to the streets to, both for protection, but as well as giving some of our officers relief. They're under a lot of distress themselves at this point. We're investing in technology. We're investing in over fifty peacemakers for the city of Indianapolis to address that crime, and that's a huge part of this administration, and I'm very thankful for it and look forward to voting yes tonight.
Very good, thank you, counselor. Counselor Nay?
Thank you, Mr. President. While this budget is far from perfect, I think it would be short-sighted and irresponsible not to consider in great depth the unprecedented public safety crisis we find ourselves here in the city. As such, I will be voting yes tonight to be sure our public safety officials have the resources they need, and I look forward to working across the aisle in two thousand and twenty-two to addressing some of the long-term issues that haven't been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to express how long this process is and how much, or how open so many members of many different departments and administration have been while going through this process. You know, the controller, Ken Clark, has been extremely gracious in answering questions and picking up phones at any given time, and I'd first off want to say thank you for that and thank you for any members of the administration that, you know, picked up the phone for me. You know, ultimately, this is about operations, this is about the fundamentals of the government or of the local government, which is keeping our city safe, keeping it clean and keeping it operational, right? And roads and police and everything in between falls in there. And I feel that I've been given the opportunity to ask plenty of questions, and there's a few things that did stand out to me throughout this process, and a big one is accountability, right? We have to make sure that we're going to get out of our expenditures what we are expecting. So we are making a lot of big financial investments this year, a lot of things that we are, from a nonprofit perspective, from a police perspective, where they could do very good things, but we have to keep a watchful eye on that, and I think that's very important. You know, I think there's some tools that we can use to our advantage in order to work with that, and our city is taking steps to do that, and I'm going to be working very closely to ensure that we see accountability and transparency, not only of these budget dollars, but that of the ARP dollars as well going through the next few years. You know, ultimately, you know, we're appropriating the dollars tonight, but it's up to Mayor Hossid's administration to make sure and see if those funds are used appropriately, and, you know, I call on him to make sure to do that for the next year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, counselor. Counselor Ethan Evans, I believe?
Thank you, and I agree with some of the points made by fellow counselors. I want to start off by saying, in December of last year, Counselor Graves and I had written an op-ed shortly after the finish of session, and it was detailing an ambitious list of goals that we had for the city of Indianapolis to meet hopefully within the decade. And while I do appreciate the positive steps that are taken within this budget, and I appreciate the need for many of the things that are in it, infrastructure, the first responders in it, and many of the other advancements through the ARPA funds that have gotten approved, in my opinion, we shouldn't be, we should be making much larger strides and taking faster action and meeting those goals than have been shown in the past year to now and going forward. So we should be looking towards other successful models in other cities for ending homelessness and creating affordable housing and ensuring a successful treatment for people with mental illnesses and substance addiction issues outside of jail facilities and ensuring transparency and accountability within our current criminal justice system and not be afraid to make those big changes to the status quo that we have. And so for those reasons, I will be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Additional comments from counselors? All right, then let us proceed to the board for our vote. Proposal number two sixty-seven carries with a vote twenty-three yeas, one nay. Counselor Adamson, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Because of the complexity and interrelated calculations of the budget proposals and amendments just adopted, I would move that the general counsel and the chief financial officer are authorized with the concurrence of the Office of Finance and Management to correct any technical or computational errors in the budget ordinances and resolutions as necessary to accurately reflect the actions of this council.
You should have a copy of this motion at the end of your agenda packets. Is there a second? All right, very good. We will go to the board for a vote. Very good. That motion carries twenty-three to one. That's the motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three hundred, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray?
The next five proposal came out of a municipal corporation, and we'll do them. Proposal number three hundred adopts the operation and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport Authority and establish appropriations for said municipal corporation. For two thousand and twenty-two, Counselor Murray asks if they have started talking about how they can let the highlights the airport a little better and let the public world know how great the airport is. Robert Thompson ended up as airport authority stated that, yes, they have started the process. Counselor Hart asked if the airport plans to end the fiscal year and projecting to end to end next year fiscal year in a deficit. Mr. Thompson stated no. Counselor Mascarioty moves, second by Counselor Brown, to send proposal number three hundred to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero, and I shall move.
The motions improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? Counselor Hart?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to make a brief comment, because we spent many hours in these committees, and I just wanted to make a very clear point that one of the things I kept on asking for from all these municipal corporations, specifically the ones that would be potentially facing a deficit, you know, a lot of them right now are using cash on hand. So there's a fair amount of these municipal corporations that are going to be using cash on hand in two thousand and twenty-two to make sure that their budget is not going to a deficit. That's not a method that is going to be sustainable for very long, because eventually they will run out of cash on hand. So one of the things I requested from these multiple municipal corporations that are facing this type of budgetary strategy this year is five-year strategic plans on how they're going to prevent that from happening in the future. You know, for anybody who's watching, a lot of this was incurred, you know, from the expenses of shutting down in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and so they're trying to really, you know, come back from that still, and, you know, all of them had plans, and I will be following up on making sure that those five-year plans are presented to me and to everybody on this council so that everybody watching has a copy of them as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was stated, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero one, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three oh one adopts the operating and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers and establish appropriations for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-two. Counselor Hart asks if there is a thirty million deficit in the proposed budget for next year. He asks what steps were taken to try and prevent the deficit, if any, and are you taking any steps to prevent them in the future? Mr. Mallon stated that there were significant pay decreases across all of the CIB employees during the heart of the pandemic. Counselor Mascarioty, second by Counselor Graves, to send proposal three oh one to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero, I shall move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? Counselor Boots?
Mr. President, I must abstain from this vote due to political and professional associations.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three, twenty-three yeas, one abstention. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero two, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three oh two adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Health and Hospital Corporation and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-two. Counselor Hart asks if Health and Hospital Corporation had done anything possible to prevent a deficit, and they have made plans to prevent it from happening in the future. Mrs. Dunn stated that they will end with a deficit. She stated that they have planned for these expenditures, which will prevent them from issuing debt. She stated that they are setting funds aside to make sure that they do not end the year with those funds as a deficit. Counselor Mascarioty moves, second by Counselor Graves, to send proposal three oh two to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero, and I shall move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded, other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number- The next item on our agenda is proposal number 303. Refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Proposal number 303 adopts the operating, maintenance, and budget tax levies for the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, better known as INGO, and establish appropriations for said municipal corporation. Once again, Counselor Hart classified the INGO should be pretty good shape in that they will be using the dollars diligently and do a good job at abiding the project. Bart Brown, CFO, stated that they have the same goals as the city of Indianapolis for XPs. Counselor Mascari moved and seconded by Counselor Brown to send proposal 303 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of six to one, with Counselor Murray casting the negative vote. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request to abstain just to avoid any conflicts of interest tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Additional comments from counselors? Chairman Jackson.
I ask to abstain as well. Thank you.
Very good. Additional counselors? All right. Seeing none, let us proceed then to the board for our vote. Motion carries 18 yays, four nays, and two abstentions. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 304. Refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Proposal number 304 adopts the operating and maintenance budget and tax levies of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library and establish appropriations for said municipal corporations for 2022. Counselor Hart, Hart asks if the library will be in good shape for the next few years and should not be impacted with deficit. Mrs. Young stated that they generally look out for five years, and they are not asking for appropriations that they cannot maintain with their current revenue stream. Counselor Evans moved, seconded by Counselor Mascari, to send proposal number 304 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion was carried by a vote of seven to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. And, sorry, 23 yays, one nay. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 305. Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 305 authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Arsenal Avenue and Marlow Avenue in District 17. Counselor Oliver removed, seconded by Counselor McCormick, to send proposal 305 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 316. Refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 316 approved the issuance of Marion County Public Library General Obligation Bond. This is for the Fort Ben Harrison Branch Facility in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $13,660,000 for the purpose of financing all of any portion of the Fort Harrison Branch Facility improved project. Branch facility improvement in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4,850,000 for the purpose of financing all of any portion of the Glendale Facility Improvement Project. This was moved and seconded and passed to the board. Due pass recommendation, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a sponsor of this, a question has come up. It was, some of the members at the branch in Wayne Township reached out to me. And so if there's anybody here from the library to answer this, I'd appreciate it. But so as we construct these, are we able to staff these new branches in a way that it's not reducing staff at other branches, specifically the Wayne branch?
Is anyone here who can speak to the question?
Good evening, counselors. I'm John Helling. I'm the interim CEO of the Indianapolis Public Library. We will not be reducing staff at any locations in order to staff these branches.
Great. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Very good. Additional questions from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. Chairman Lewis.
Mr. President, I apologize. May I have a point of privilege?
Please.
I, I apologize. I voted on proposal number 302, and my spouse is employed at Health and Hospital, and I did not mean to cast my vote, so I just wanted to explain that. I do apologize.
All right. Counselor Kim.
Mr. President, we can't change the vote at this time.
All right. But you have, it has been noted.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but it's been noted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal 317. Refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Yes, Mr. President. 317 is the second portion of 316. 316 actually get the approval, and 317 actually approved the appropriation for the Fort Ben Harrison Branch and also for the Glendale Branch. The Financial Office of Department gave a brief presentation, proposed a 316, and proposed a 316, and proposed a 317. Now, Mrs. Young stated that they came before the committee in 2014, but since then, the costs have skyrocketed, and the approval amounts from 2014 are not longer enough to do what they have to do. Mr. Jason from the Marion County Library Act buyers went through the financial reports of the bond. Counselor Hart asked if they were ready to build, or will there be another delay? Mrs. Young stated that they are ready to build. They have the designs done and a construction manager in place. Counselor Mascari moved, seconded by Counselor Gray, to send proposal 316 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of seven to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal 318. Refer to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on September the 27th, the committee met to establish an interest in purchasing real estate at 7240 Dewey Avenue for the purposes of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Don Kovan, Department of Parks and Recreation Deputy Director, stated that this parcel of land is along the Penske Trail. He also stated that they currently have had two appraisals on this property, and have made an offer to buy the property. Counselor Carlino moved, and seconded by Counselor McCormick, to send proposal 318 with the full council with a due pass recommendation of a vote of six to zero, which the chairman also moved for its adoption.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal 319. Refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 319 was heard October 5th. It establishes interest in purchasing real estate at 6379 North College Avenue by the Indianapolis Fire Department for the purpose of establishing a new station 32. Passed out of committee 10-0. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly wanted to say that I thank the administration for helping put this proposal forward. This is going to be great for connecting emergency services in District 2. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you. Additional comments? Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just add on to what Counselor Potts says. This is, this is in his district, but it has a significant benefit for District 7 as we had a fire station close in, in District 7 several years, years ago. And folks in my district have been concerned about response times and wanting to ensure that any new IFT stations have clear access to District 7, and this does that. So I'm proud to co-sponsor it and support Counselor Potts in moving this fire station over next to college. Thanks a lot.
Very good. Thank you. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. We will now proceed to call to order the Police Special Service District Council. Proposal 264, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 264, 2021, approves the tax levy and rate for the public, for the Police Special Service District for 2022. Counselor Jared Evans moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal 264 to the full council. The due pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of eight to one. With Counselor Ethan Evans casting the negative vote, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I've just got a question for clarification if anybody's here that could answer this. Is this, I'm looking at the proposal, but is this a raise in taxes for? And if so, which tax does it raise?
Hi, Abby Hanson with the Controller's Office. It is not a raise in taxes. It's just administrative action. We have to do this separately for police, fire, and solid waste because they are, they're own separate taxing districts. It's the exact same information that was already in the, the bigger budget ordinance. We just have to adopt these separately.
All right. Thank you. Very good. Additional comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 yays, one nay. We will now call to order the Fire, the Fire Special Service District Council. Proposal number 265. Refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 265, 2021, approves the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District for 2022. Counselor Jared Evans moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal 255 to the full council, 265 to the full council. Due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. We will now call to order the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Council. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposal number 266, 2021, approves the tax levy and rate for Solid Waste Collection Special Service District 2022. Counselor Gray moved and seconded by Counselor Oliver to send proposal number 266 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. We will now reconvene the meeting of the City County Council. There is no business under new business, and the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of the council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Maori.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counselor Maori and Mascari in memory of Judith Gillespie, by Counselor Maori in memory of George Battles, by Counselor Barth in memory of Langdon W. Koomler, by Counselor Carlino and McCormick in memory of Diana Virgil, by Counselor Adamson in memory of Tony McCree Rainier, Charlotte Luton, and Kyle Hendricks, by Counselor Osley in memory of Gregory Thomas, Jermaine Charles Washington, by Counselor Ane and Mascari in memory of Rick Myers, by Counselor Larison in memory of Hannah Crutchfield, by Counselor Jackson in memory of Giles Embry. Mr. President, I would like to move the German of this meeting of the City Indianapolis, the city, the meeting of Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contribution of the persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the motion of, I respectfully ask the supportive fellow counselors our further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maori. Hearing no objections, the motion is, is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we're adjourned. Thank you, counselors.